February 1st, 2021. We appear to have a quorum, so I will call this meeting to order. Anne, if you would please call the roll.
Grant Foster.
Here.
Keith Furman.
Present.
Rebecca Campbell.
Here.
Eric Sunquist.
Here.
Randy Udell.
Here.
Chris McHale.
Here.
Tom Wilson.
Here.
Waltzazar DeAnda Santana.
Here.
Margaret Bergamini.
Here.
Badri Lankella.
Here.
All right.
Thank you, Anne. And Margaret, as you know, we still have a vacancy, so you'll be in voting status for the entirety of the meeting as our first alternate. Approval of minutes from January 4th, 2021, assuming all members have had a chance to review those minutes if they so chose. Is there a motion to approve? Please use the hand raised feature. Chris McHale, motion to approve. Eric Sunquist, second. Any discussion? Chris, okay, good. All right, seeing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes from our January 4th, 2021 meeting, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
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 Oppose, no. Chair believes it's unanimous. If you'd like to register a no vote, please raise your hand. Seeing none, that is unanimous. Registrants for public comment for, I'm sorry. Are there any, oh, that's actually right. I'm looking at the wrong place on the agenda. Are there any registrants for public comment for items not on the agenda? Don't believe so. Are there any communications, disclosures, or accusations from members of the board? Please use the hand raised feature. Alder Campbell, please go ahead.
As a worker owner at Union Cab, I need to recuse myself from item number two.
Thank you, Alder Campbell.
So I'll be going off camera for that.
Thank you. Are there any other communications, disclosures, or accusations from members of the board? Seeing none, before we begin, I do want to take a brief moment to welcome Randy Udell, who's an alderperson from Pittsburgh to our board. Randy, if you'd like to take a moment to let us know a sentence or two about yourself. You may do so.
Oh, very, very good. Thank you. And I must apologize, I'm having some Zoom technical problems with whatever's going on. I'll have to fix it later. But again, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to sit with this board. And a little bit about myself, I am fairly new alder with the city of Pittsburgh. I represent District 4, C8. It's comprised of urban and rural, one of the larger districts of the city. Other than that, I have a long history with politics. I'm treasurer of the Democratic Party of Wisconsin, state party treasurer, that is. I'm a retired engineer with AT&amp;T. Twenty-some years with them and a long assortment with other political affiliations. But thank you very much for allowing me to work with you and to sit on this board. Thank you.
Thank you, alderperson Udell. I'm sure I can speak for the rest of the board in saying that we all look forward to working with you as well. All right, our first item of business for the evening is Logistics 63461, amending Section 11.06 of the Madison General Ordinances to lower licensing and vehicle fees, regulate prepayment policies, allow taxi cab companies to use coupons or discounts, and make various housekeeping updates. Do you have a member of staff giving a presentation?
Keith, will you be presenting or giving a summary of this? You're muted right now.
Yes, yes, I will. Are we ready to go now?
Yes, go ahead, Keith.
Okay. So I'm talking about some ordinance changes for taxi cab companies, just in the way of just general background, people aren't too familiar with it. So taxi cab companies are required to be licensed by the city and meet the following major requirements. Provide service to the entire area, operate 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and generally not refuse service to passengers without a good reason. The general philosophy is basically to have a lot of restrictions, a lot of requirements for these cab companies to meet to provide service for individuals who rely on public, rely on cabs, elderly, disabled, low-income individuals. This kind of model has been going on for many years, and then a few years back, TNCs, the Uber and Lyft, entered the market. It just, it put the whole market on its side. It sapped up a lot of the market share of it, and they basically had none of the kind of regulations that the cab companies have to follow. So the city, at one point, we tried to create our own licensing for TNCs, but the state came in and they disallowed the city's ability to do that. We kind of were starting from square one. So way back, last time the cab companies were being licensed by the city, there was a will of the Transportation Commission to work with the cab companies and to look at what their needs are, look at the ordinances, and which ones we can make their life easier by removing some of the unnecessary, unimportant ordinances, or just to reduce the burden of these companies who are struggling. And now, due to COVID-19, they're struggling all the more. It's actually much, much worse now. So we put together, I put together a work group of all the cab companies. We met a few times and we just operated on consensus. So all the companies had to agree before we included a proposal. We met the police department to get some of their input, and we came about, worked the city attorney's office to draft these ordinance changes. And plus, she also wanted to, any kind of cleanup of these ordinances, there's a lot of, you know, references to things that are obsolete and old references and just general language cleanup. So just right down to the actual proposals, some of them are pretty straightforward. Reduce company and vehicle permit fees. So they wanted to reduce a two-year renewal license is, was, what, currently is $1,750. That'd be reduced to $1,000. And the vehicle permit fee, those are like those little stickers you see on the back of the cab. Reduce that from $65 to $35, and that would help them a little bit financially. The second proposal, basically all the companies, their license renewals are every other year, and they're doing January 31st. And I guess I didn't even realize it was due at that, that early in the season, you know, early in the year. Their license doesn't expire till July. They all expired at the same time in July. So we thought it'd be easier for them to compile all the information, information that we require them to submit to us. We did it a little bit later in the year, so we just moved that to March. All the companies agreed to that. Another change. Make changes to allowable a prepayment fare. So taxi cab companies, it was a very, a great consensus that they're having problems with people fleeing their cabs without paying. It's happening more and more frequently. The police department no longer responds to, if somebody doesn't pay for the cab, they won't send a police out. Now, the companies can report a problem, go online to report it. The only time the police will probably report to an issue like that is if there's violence, if somebody, if, you know, he hits a cab company or has a weapon or threatens him. But generally, that's basically a report a problem. So the cab companies need some more tools in dealing with that. Now, currently, there is some situations where they can get prepayment. You know, if somebody was put in a cab by a police officer, if somebody appears drunk, if someone changes their destination in the middle of a ride. But they think that a little more was needed. Now, one of the cab companies wanted to be able to just require prepayment for every ride. They think, you know, now's the time, we need to do that. The other companies disagreed. So we kind of went back and forth, and we landed at basically two methods. So if a company wanted to get solely prepaid for all rides, they could do that. They would just have to have me on file with the city clerk and me and just notify that and notify their customers. But the other cab companies, they, the one, they want to keep under current law, but they also wanted to add a new category where people would be required to prepay, and that's minors without parents. They've had a lot of issues with kids, basically, getting cabs and not having the fare, and it happens more frequent than you can imagine. So the ordinance change allows for that. If a company minors could be charged for prepayment. One of the cab companies, they wanted to be able to, was a metered cab company, they wanted to be able, they wanted to apply for a grant where it was required that the cab would have to be a shared ride. A shared ride means that multiple people can get in the cab, and it may take the driver a little bit longer, but it's a little bit cheaper. But they're basically charged from, by zone. So the city's divided into a zone map, so if you go through one zone, it's this amount. If you go through two zones, it's a greater amount, as opposed to a meter, which basically measures, you know, time and distance and charges you a fare. So the grant that they want to apply to required for shared service. So we would, under this provision, we would allow them to license a couple of vehicles as shared cabs. Which none of the companies objected to that. None of the other companies objected to that. So there was a discussion about initially, we have, as I mentioned earlier, there was language which would allow the city to regulate TNCs, the Ubers and the Lifts. But, but as I said, it was basically made obsolete by the, by the state legislature, taking that right away from us. But there was hope that maybe that might change, so we were just going to leave that provision in there. Oh, so essentially, all the cab companies, new drivers, they have to, when they apply for their cab permit, they're ultimately, they're required to take a sensitivity training course. So they initially get a provisional license, and it gives them three months to take this training. And then, once they prove that they're taking it, then they get their regular license. But if they don't take it, then their license is expired and they have to start over again. Now, just the way, this is just all about basically cleaning up the language. We're not, we're basically codifying that exact process that has existed for 20-plus years. But just the language itself, it was confusing and it wasn't clear, so this was just an opportunity to clean up that language. And the last item, so in the ordinance, it disallows, there's restrictions about how companies can give coupons or vouchers to customers. None of us really, I don't see any harm in that giving. I think initially, it was, you know, you file your rates with the city, and it was very strict about keeping those rates. So I guess instead of giving coupons, the people would be moving away from that. None of the companies objected to allowing that, and I personally don't object to doing that, to allow them to have coupons. I think it's, it's good. If they want to be more competitive, the other companies can do it as well. It's not restrictive. And that's about it. I know Anne Kovich, I don't know if you guys have talked about them, Anne Kovich, I sent a letter. There was some confusion. It was a provision which provides, if a cab driver, when he applies for a permit or renewal, it goes to the police records, and they do a background check. If they find something on a background check that's, you know, they feel maybe makes them dangerous, makes them dangerous to others by being a taxi cab driver, there's an appeal process. And that appeal committee is made out of three members, the Transportation Commission, and it's been that way for a long time. Somehow, just in the drafting, there was some confusion at the city's attorney's office. But I think the proposal, I think Amber's going to talk about this a little bit more, but it wasn't the intent of this work group or me to make any changes in that. So I think, I think there'd be a proposal here to move that back to the way it was originally, the way it currently is in ordinance. That's, that's all I have. If you have any questions. And the cab companies are here today. Some of them have registered, some of them have not. I'm not sure. We may want to ask them questions or get them online.
Yeah, so we do have some registrants for public comment. Is there any more, are there any more comments initially from staff? You can, I think Amber, yeah, go ahead.
Sure, I might as well address it now before it comes up. So at the very bottom, and it's mentioned a couple of times throughout the ordinance, part of our housekeeping in the city attorney's office was to eliminate references to multiple subcommittees that aren't standing subcommittees. And so we changed it to that these appeals that happen once or twice a year would be in front of the Transportation Commission, knowing that the Transportation Commission could make their own subcommittee anytime these came up. And, but I have heard feedback that the Transportation Commission, at least one or two members strongly opposes that change. This was just a housekeeping thing from the city attorney's office. It's not a major part of this legislation. So this board can make a recommendation to the council, and if you decide to make a recommendation on all the substantive changes in the legislation, you can do that with a recommendation that the appeal subcommittee language be changed. Be not changed as part of this ordinance amendment. And then I can talk to the drafters, see if they agree with that, and draft a substitute if appropriate. And I'm sure other people will talk about that, but like I said, it's not really that big of a deal. It wasn't meant to change actually how things were operated. It was just kind of how we labeled things. But I'm happy to answer any other question, legal questions that come up as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Amber. All right, then we're going to go to our public comments next. So the first registrant that we have is Anne Kovich, who is the chair of the Transportation Commission, 2605 Golden Gateway, Madison, Wisconsin, in opposition, wishing to speak. Anne, I can see you there. If you can hear me, you may begin when you're ready.
I can, am I unmuted?
You are.
Excellent. Hi, everyone. Both Keith and Amber have talked a little bit about the appeal subcommittee, and we would, I've been on the Transportation Commission and was on the Transit and Parking Commission, as was, as is and was Ken Street. And we both have served on the appeal subcommittee, and we would like to see it remain in place. I understand that they were trying to provide more flexibility and get rid of standing subcommittees, but with regard to logistics of conducting the appeal hearing and timing of the appeals, it would be much better to leave the appeal subcommittee in place rather than have to form an ad hoc appeal subcommittee every time it was needed. And I personally felt that, I sent you all an email that had a very, very detailed response to this, but I personally felt that the language that was drafted and included in the ordinance makes it appear to anyone reading it that they would have to go in front of the full Transportation Commission, which would be problematic for a lot of the people making those appeals. So my recommendation, and Ken Street's recommendation, unfortunately, Ken was not able to be here tonight, would be to support leaving the appeal subcommittee in place. So in other words, remove the proposed changes to delete the appeal subcommittee. And in talking with Amber, she asked if there was anything in the language that could be changed to make it more efficient or effective for the Transportation Commission. And I said, yeah, absolutely. And so she drafted some language that I included in my email. And this would be in Section 13C of the ordinance to read as follows. "The appeal subcommittee shall consist of three members or alternate members of the Transportation Commission as appointed by the chair of the Transportation Commission." So that adds a lot of clarity. By leaving the appeal subcommittee in place, it makes it very clear to any appellant that they would not be going in front of the full Transportation Commission. And we wouldn't have to, once or twice a year, or however often during non-pandemic times that we would need to press appeals. The procedure is in place, the process is in place, and we can move forward on an expedition. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Anne. Are there any questions for Anne Kovich? I'm sure Anne will be staying on until this, at least until this item is done, so we can come back to her if someone does come up with a question for her. Oh, Margaret, go ahead.
Yeah, actually, just a quick question. Hi, Anne, thanks for catching this. Just want to make sure that I understand. So essentially, you're suggesting that in the section regarding the composition of this appeal subcommittee, that the substitute language be used, and then for all the other strike-throughs in that section of the ordinance, basically eliminate them? Is that correct?
Yes, so the appeal subcommittee would stay in place, and there are also an area earlier in 13C and an area in 6C that strikes the appeal subcommittee and substitutes transportation, the words Transportation Commission instead. So that, so that it would leave the appeal subcommittee in place, and I think Amber could maybe address how she would exactly plan to do that. But it would remove any changes that would delete the appeal subcommittee and just modify the language about the composition of the subcommittee to make it clear that we can include alternate members, which would be great, and that as is, I believe, what John Strange had told us we could do, that these can just be appointed by the chair of the Transportation Commission. So we can move forward immediately upon having an appeal. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Margaret. Thank you, Anne. All right, our next registrant is William Carter, 2458 Pennsylvania, Madison, Wisconsin, in support, wishing to speak, representing Union Cab of Madison. William, if you're not seeing his name, oh yeah, I do see you there. Go ahead if you're ready, you've got three minutes.
Okay. Thank you. Keith did a pretty good summary earlier of the ordinance changes, and I registered to speak in favor of them. We met, maybe it was a year and a half ago now, to talk about these, and I think they were probably finalized late in 2019. Of course, COVID happened since then, is still going on. Lowering the fees will definitely help, especially now. And when we met, we weren't even facing what we are now, so we'd definitely like to see the fees lowered even more if possible. Making the application due later, that's definitely going to help us out. Keeping the TNC regulation language in there, I would recommend that that happen. We lobby the state government every year to make changes. The state government's composition has changed somewhat. It's an uphill battle, but we still have hopes of getting TNC regulation moved back to municipal government. And then on the cash up, there's just some questions that I would have about what we would be allowed to do under that. I know there's a provision in there for minors, and one of my questions is, is how that would be enforced, because it says the person has to acknowledge. I could see that being misused. And then whether or not we'd be allowed, if we wanted to take a block of time, if there's a certain part of the day where there's more runners, and just say, like, from midnight to four in the morning, everyone would have to prepay, whether we'd be allowed to do that under that provision. But I would like to see this happen, and I'm available for questions if anyone has any.
Thank you, William. Are there any questions for the speaker? Margaret, go ahead. You're muted, Margaret.
Sorry about that. A little confused in that this was presented to us as something that was agreed to by consensus by the various cab companies. But your comments indicate that you would like to see changes in the draft that is in front of us. The recommendation, you know, we have some specific changes that have been worked through with the chair of the Transportation Commission. But your comments indicate that there's not a consensus. Would you support us passing this this evening, or do you want this sent back for further consideration? What are you asking for?
I do support passing it as it is. There's, there's been a delay already because of COVID, so we did agree to all of these. And again, as I said, it was a year and a half ago. I just threw in about the fees now. I mean, a year and a half ago, our situation was different than it is now, as everyone's is, so. But we did agree on that, and then on the cash up, we did agree to those provisions, and that was really just questions about what we would be able to do and not be able to do as it is, but I would recommend passing it.
Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Margaret. Thank you, William. So our next, next person who's registered is Carl Schultz, 700 Cottage Grove Road, Madison, in support. Does not wish to speak but available to answer questions, representing Xerology. Now, I understand that there might have been some confusion about whether or not you wanted to make a comment, Carl. So if you do want to make a comment now, would, would be the time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson, and thank you, alders and board members. I don't really have any comment to make other than I support this, this motion, this proposal. And I really want to express appreciation for all the hard work staff and others put into reaching consensus on this. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Carl. Any questions for the speaker? Seeing none, our next registrant is Eric Brecky, 1403 Gilson Street, Madison, in support, not wishing to speak but available to answer questions. In this case, also, I understand there might have been some confusion about wanting to make a comment or not. So Eric, if you do want to make a comment, now would be the time. Eric is also available to answer questions, representing Madison Taxi.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Eric.
Yeah, sorry, I was, there was some confusion on the box I clicked there. Yeah, these guys covered it pretty well there, so, you know, the basics. It sounds like nobody's really in opposition, which is good. The entire intent of the whole thing was to help out an industry that had already taken a gut punch from the opening, you know, wide-up opening, basically, to gypsy cabs in the form of, in the form of Lyft and Uber. So the destruction that caused the industry launched this investigation into, into a matter here that, and I, you know, I would wonder if there's anybody that could say that there's been one improvement from the time we met, you know, way back a year and a half ago, when we'd been popped with COVID. On top of it, obviously, the answer is no. So at that time, I had actually opened the bid at $0 for the permit, which drew a couple of chuckles, but if we were ever at a point where $0 might be more appropriate than the $35 we were due to here, I think that would be the time. In other words, things have only gotten worse. The intent to help us out is a good one, and now, if we wish to sort of give back to the taxi community that has given to this city in many ways for many decades now, to people that Lyft and Uber simply cannot or will not handle. If we want to keep these people in a position that they can get around in the middle of the night, they can get around to the grocery stores, or whatever they can do, medical appointments. This industry needs a little lift, a little boost in a tough time that has now been triple or quadruply made more and more tough. But there's no sense saying a whole lot more, since it sounds like everybody is in agreement to to continue on with this helping out of an industry that has helped this city, I think, a lot. So I think that's all I got to say about that at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Are there any questions for the speaker? All right, seeing none. Questions for staff? Make sure to use the hand raised feature on Zoom, so I can see you. Walter Foster, go ahead.
Thank you. Just, I guess, one clarification on the suggestions that Anne submitted for the that Ann submitted for the Subcommittee. Just to confirm, that would not require an Alder to be one of the members? Is that right? Because in the current version, I think it does require it. But in the suggested edits that you received, Amber.
Go ahead, Amber.
Chairperson Kovac mentioned that it has been quite difficult to find an Alder and to coordinate scheduling to have with the requirement to have an Alder from the Transportation Commission on that Subcommittee. So it would just be three members or alternate members of the Transportation Committee.
Great, thank you. That sounds good. And then I had questions on, maybe this is for you, Keith. So we heard a couple, I mean, a risen favor. It sounds like this, it's been a little bit while since this was all discussed. And a few folks talked about how things have kind of gotten even more difficult. So two questions. One, the question I think that was raised around prepayment during certain hours of the day. Was that something that was looked into? Or any thoughts on that one as being an allowable condition for prepayment?
I think the intent of the original ordinance change was that one company wanted to do it all the time, basically 24/7. So there was no confusion. Whether or not, I'm just speaking off the top of my head here. But I'm thinking as long as it's done in a way that's universal, that doesn't cause confusion, that says if they do it during certain hours, I think that would be okay, as long as they have everything upfront. You know, they say they have to file with the clerk that anybody riding at this time is going to have to prepay. So someone can't say, you're not allowed, you're just doing this because I look this way, or this is the color of my skin. I think as long as it's done universal way, it's okay with me. But I think Amber should probably get Amber's opinion on that.
Go ahead, Amber.
Hi, sure. So the way that it's drafted currently in Section F, let's see, it's on page 11 of the document in Legistar. The first option, so it's, is that they can adopt a prepayment policy as long as it's applied to all passengers and not at the discretion of the driver. So I don't think that it was contemplated at the time that I was drafting this, any kind of special hourly prepayment policy. But I think that that would fall under F1 here as long as the company had their company policy be that every single person prepaid during those times. I think it would qualify under this.
Thank you. That's helpful. It might be worth just throwing that in the draft or the analysis or something if that's one of the specific things that one of the companies is looking for. Just to clarify that that would be permissible. And I think my only other question was in regards to the fees. So I'm definitely supportive of reducing those. I think we've heard, I think everybody knows kind of what has happened to the taxi industry generally, and it's really tough to compete right now. I mean, Keith, what are your thoughts on the reduction that's in there as drafted? And do you think, given where things are at, it makes sense to consider an additional lowering of any of those? Either the driver permit fee or the other one?
I think, I mean, it's a very significant reduction. I think it's fair. Of course, you know, they're going to want lower rates, right? Everybody wants lower rates, no one wants higher rates. But I think that was something we came about by consensus. We established that. I think, you know, I don't want to delay this process anymore. I really feel that we should probably just stick with what we have listed today.
I don't have my questions. Thank you.
Additional questions for staff? Seeing none, is there a motion? Alder Foster?
I would recommend approval with the changes recommended by Ann Kovac to be incorporated in.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Margaret. Discussion, Alder Foster, would you like to speak to your motion?
I'll just say, I think these are all good changes. We had asked the staff work with the companies to come up with to do this. And yeah, unfortunately, it got a little bit delayed, but glad to see it done and thanks for all the work on it. And I'm supportive of these changes.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of recommending approval of amending Section 11, 11.06 of the Madison General Ordinances to lower licensing and vehicle fees, regulate prepayment policies, allow taxi cab companies to use coupons or discounts, and make various housekeeping updates with the changes regarding the Appeal Subcommittee as explained by Transportation Commission Chair Kovac? Please unmute yourselves and say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Chair believes it's unanimous. If you'd like to register a no vote, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands raised, that is unanimous. Thank you to all staff members and attendees. All right, next item is Legistar 63914, update on public involvement, plans for complete streets, Vision Zero, and Metro Network redesign.
Maybe, so Melissa Huggins will be involved in explaining the Metro Transit Network redesign. I might provide a little bit of backdrop. There has been some concern by city staff that with Vision Zero, which is a huge initiative, as well as the Complete Green Streets, and that Metro Transit Network redesign, there could end up being, I'm going to call it engagement fatigue, you know, where we visit neighborhoods or target, you know, different areas of the city multiple times for things that are somewhat related. And so what we've thought about and tried to do is, are there ways that we could combine some of these efforts so that when we talk with a neighborhood or a certain group that has an interest, we're talking in a little bit more holistic manner? Metro Transit Network redesign is actually a, I'm going to say, it's a significant effort and it has a lot of content. And so when we think about trying to mix that with the Vision Zero, we just feel like our engagement, there'd be too much in our engagement, you know, to cover both topics in a responsible manner. However, Vision Zero and Complete Green Streets are talking about a lot of the same things, you know, slowing speeds, trying to make streets more pedestrian and bicycle friendly. And so we felt like that was perhaps a better pairing. In that measure, what we've done is we've gone to the public involvement consultant that's doing our Complete Green Streets, which is Equity by Design, and asked if she could come up with, Annette Miller, she could come up with perhaps an engagement strategy that would cover both the Vision Zero effort and the Complete Green Streets. Right now, we haven't gotten a full proposal yet. There's been some modifications, some back and forth. It looks like that effort, which means the Vision Zero effort and the Complete Green Streets, probably will have a pre-design effort, which means that there's a certain amount of engagement to understand what's needed. And then a second effort that would build on that and kind of be guided by the pre-designed effort, as Annette Miller says. And so we're working on that, kind of on the left hand. Now, Melissa Huggins is involved with Jarrett Walker and will be kind of presenting on what we are proposing to do on the Metro Network redesign. So that's kind of my background. Melissa?
Thanks, Tom. Thanks for teeing it up. So I think attached in Legistar is the Public Engagement Plan that Urban Assets has put together to kind of lay the groundwork for what we plan to do throughout this process. We think of the Public Engagement Plan as a living document. So it'll be updated as we move through the process and as we see things at work, see where we have holes, see how we need to adjust. I think one of the biggest things, as you know, going where we are right now, is that everything is virtual. So for the initial phases, we will be virtual. The hope is that once the good weather returns and things open up a bit, we'll be able to engage people outside safely for the spring and fall. Essentially, there are three different phases to the project. And in each of these phases, there's a very robust community engagement component. Each one of those phases includes a survey that we will push out far and wide. We have found that during COVID-19, that surveys have been really effective in getting people to engage because they can engage at their leisure and we can keep pushing it out when we see that there's a gap in who we're hearing from. We'll also use interviews and focus groups. And those will likely occur in the first phase, which is, will kick off here the end of this month. And then in the summer and fall, we will get out and do a lot of tabling. This is one of the ways we've been very successful in engaging all types of folks, is by actually going out to events, setting up tables and being there and being able to reach out to people as they wander by. So those are some of the key things that we'll be doing. Of course, there is also the usual public meeting in each one of those phases, which is important, but really only touches a certain group of folks who are open to that and like to participate. And then the other thing that's a little bit different from what we've done in past projects like BRT, and this is a tool that Jarrett Walker uses throughout the country. And we're having stakeholder workshops, again, one during each phase. And this is an invitation-only event. It's about a three-hour workshop. And we will be sending out invitations here shortly. There is a partial list in the Public Engagement Plan. Since that was drafted, that has, we've been continuing to add names and update things, but gives you a sense of who is invited to the workshop. It's really about engaging in community leaders to have them come to the table and do some of the hard work around making choices and trade-offs as a part of the planning process so that they can then take that back to their constituencies. We'll also be relying on those community leaders to help us get the surveys out and to find ways to engage people through focus groups and interviews. So that, in a nutshell, is the process that we have planned. And excuse me, my three dogs are just coming in from their walk. A little loud here. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Melissa. Questions for staff? Right, seeing none, thank you. We will then move on to our next item, Legistar 63956, Fleet Vision Zero Efforts.
Yeah, good evening. Thank you. Can I share my screen to show a presentation?
Should be able to.
Great.
All right, there it is.
Okay, so we should be looking at a PowerPoint. Hopefully, you're seeing the first slide here. So my name is Mahat Joshi. I know some of you, and I've met some of you. I'm the Fleet Superintendent for the City of Madison. And despite the numbers, the fleet at the City of Madison is all agencies except Metro, which has their own fleet and water utility. So it's all the other 28 divisions that use the fleet, 1,400 vehicles that we purchase and maintain. My division's about 40 staff. And just about any city employee can drive a city vehicle for business purposes as long as they have a Wisconsin driver's license. So that could be up to 3,000 people or so. And the reason why fleets are typically a part of Vision Zero plans, including here in Madison, is because so many of our vehicles are out there every day. It's snowing recently, so you'll see plow trucks and salt spreaders covering just about every part of the city eventually. And the collection trucks out there, obviously, fire equipment, ambulances, police cars. So we have a large presence on the roadways. And so we can use that to set an example, both by the way we drive, hopefully as safely as possible, and also by what kind of technology we put out there that can make our vehicles more safe. And I'll be talking about that a little bit. Okay, just some quick notes for this group about sustainability. I'm going to be talking mostly about safety today. But as far as sustainability goes, we also have a very strong program. In case you didn't know about it, I just want to run through some of the highlights. We've saved over 5 million pounds of carbon dioxide for the fleet in the last few years. The biggest part of that is biodiesel, which is renewable energy fuel that comes from the state of Wisconsin. It's either grown or processed right here in Wisconsin. So it's good for the local economy. And it's also helping us save a lot of carbon dioxide and other emissions. We've ramped up our electric vehicle program. We had zero back in 2018. We're up to about 60 and growing. We're hoping to get into electric trucking this year for our fleet, which will put us right on the cutting edge of where anybody is. I'm hoping to point to that by the end of this year. We have over 100 hybrid electric vehicles. So these are vehicles that have gasoline engines and also electric motors that supplement the fuel economy. So all of the new police cars that you're seeing out there from the last few model years are hybrids, for example. And that's the bulk of our hybrids. And we're using them for other applications as well. We're investing in anti-idling technology on our ambulances. So when they stop somewhere and they need to keep working while they're stopped somewhere, we can turn off the engine while they're doing medical work, picking someone up and using things in the box of the vehicle. We can shut off the engine and still run the box of that ambulance. We're using soy tires. This is something a lot of people don't know about. We're replacing all of our police car tires with soy tires. They actually perform better, especially in winter. And they're made with soybean oil rather than petroleum. So it's better for the environment as well. Picture here, we have a solar EV charging station. So I mentioned we have close to 60 EVs around the city. We've bought a bunch of these solar chargers that lets us charge electric vehicles completely off the grid, completely on the sun. One of the issues with EV charging in Wisconsin is that our grid isn't necessarily the cleanest. A lot of fossil fuels go into the grid that we use. So if you have a charging station on the grid, that's great. It's great for that EV. We're not going to be emitting for the life of that vehicle any emissions. It'll be zero emissions for the next 10 to 15 years. However, the upstream effects of using fossil fuels to fuel your vehicles is an issue we're tackling with solar. We have a brand-new HQ on Nacusa Trail, which is where I'm sitting right now. It's really nice. After COVID, I would invite any of you to take a tour. And we've gotten some recognition that we're proud of. Number 34 Greenest Fleet in North America, top 50 government fleet in North America in 2020. We have much higher ambitions than that. Hopefully, in the next few years, we'll be seeing that. And finally, we've been hosting and doing a lot of regional and national special events, a lot of presentations, outreach, like I'm doing right now. Okay, so Vision Zero, Madison for Fleet. We have a bunch of ideas. I'll just go over some of them with you. Something I'd like to do is recognize all of the top drivers that work for the city. This would be daily drivers, like bus drivers and garbage truck drivers, people that drive as a major part of their job every day, and typically larger equipment, larger trucks and buses, which are more difficult to drive safely. And we would look up the driving records of these folks and work with management of all the different agencies to pick the top drivers that can be recognized in a ceremony that we're doing in March 2021. So this is the first time we've ever done this. But I think it'll be a fun project. It'll be good to recognize some of these folks who might be unsung heroes behind the scenes a little bit, but are doing very important work for the City of Madison. Okay, GPS technology. Okay, GPS technology, something else we're very excited about is having...
Yes? Your slides are not advancing, so you might want to advance your slides.
Okay, let me try to do that again. So can you see a slide with a map on it right now?
No, we see the sustainability notes right now.
Okay.
Safe Driver Awards.
Okay, great. So you save driver awards, as I mentioned. This is the photo you should have been seeing. Let me know if it advances to the map.
Mahant, you're not in slideshow view.
We can see the map now, but we can see the PowerPoint with the all the slides on the left. So yeah, you're not in slideshow mode.
Should I take out slideshow mode? Let's see.
Mahant, I think you can either just advance from the slideshow like...
Yeah, okay.
...the viewer, or if you want to do the slideshow, you'll probably have to unshare your screen and reshare your screen with your slideshow presentation. So...
Okay, is everyone seeing the map slide right now?
Yes.
Okay, I think I've figured out how to advance it. Okay, so the technology I mentioned is GPS technology, which we put on vehicles. We're starting out with the Public Works Group of Vehicles. And a lot of great stuff about this technology. You know where all of your assets are at all times. This is actually a real map of some of our GPS assets. We also will get every instance where the vehicle is speeding above the speed limit at whatever amount that we set, and also braking hard, accelerating hard, not wearing a seatbelt. Some of these behaviors that are typically considered unsafe or might lead to collisions. We can also track all of the idling that we do. So I mentioned that idling is a problem for city vehicles. They cause damage to the engines and also pollute the air, and GPS can be used for that. And because we're investing so heavily in electric vehicles, this GPS technology can tell us how much charge we're using and give us a really good idea of how much power it takes to power up these vehicles. Okay, can people see the next slide here, driver policy?
We're still on GPS.
Okay, let me see.
Now we can see it.
Great. All right, so we recently did a large rewrite, the Cars Committee, which has a number of agencies on it, and some other committees, including the Public Works Transportation Committee, to come up with a rewrite of the city driver policy. Now, some of you might be familiar with this. The previous policy was quite vague on a number of items. So we spent quite a lot of time updating it between Fleet and Risk Management and some other divisions. And I'm just going to go over the highlights of the policy. Can you see major policy changes here?
Yes.
Okay, great. So one of the policy changes we're looking at is better rules around commuting. So some city employees need to drive vehicles home in order to respond to emergencies. Or if you're like me, Comp Group 21 folks are allowed to take vehicles home. We've made some clear rules around this, around commuting, to make sure that it's a restricted list and only people that really need to be commuting will be commuting. So that's a big change, which should reduce the miles that we're driving by eliminating unnecessary trips and also that the proper approvals are followed by the city and by the driver who takes a vehicle home. Okay, some other things that are in this policy. We're addressing electric vehicle charging, which is becoming a big part of our fleet. I mentioned GPS, and there's a number of rules we put in place around that, including not tampering with GPS technology. We've done some other things, clarification on how to use the pool or the motor pool, which anyone can reserve a vehicle from online, and how to make reservations, and who are monitors for the keys. A big one I wanted to talk about today is the new cellphone policy. So distracted driving is a major problem, not just in Madison but across the country. And it's considered to be part of collisions in about 26% of all US traffic collisions. That cellphone's being used either handheld or hands-free set as well. So cellphone usage is like driving with a 0.08 blood alcohol level. So that's right at the legal limit. And when you talk on the phone while you're driving, it's considered to be as dangerous as a 0.08 blood alcohol level, according to a large number of studies that have been done on this subject. So hands-free sets, again, are no safer than handheld sets due to distraction. Now, one of the things that a lot of fleets do, including ours, is encourage folks to use hands-free sets because it's within the law. It's currently within the Wisconsin State Transportation laws to use hands-free sets, even though it's no safer than handheld. And so our fleet rules are going a step further and banning both types of cellphones, handheld and hands-free, while our employees are driving city vehicles. So this isn't really about enforcement. In fact, it's hard to know if someone's driving with a headset in their head. When a truck goes by, you might not know. I think it's more about changing culture, encouraging folks to change the way they do things. There's a number of ways around this. People can pull over or use radios. They can call back later. We've put in an exception for emergencies. So Metro's already doing this, by the way. They have a no-cellphone policy for Metro bus drivers, but they can use a radio if someone needs to contact them on something urgent. So this is one of the reasons I wanted to talk to all of you today because I believe there's a lot of potential for this rule to be used beyond just our fleet. I'm hoping to successfully implement this for Madison's fleet and then present this to all the other fleets in the area, like UW and Dane County and the surrounding communities such as Fitchburg and Sun Prairie and other fleets that might be smaller than ours, and the private sector as well. I would love to go to the private sector and get pledges from all of them to work with us as part of the Vision Zero Plan to eliminate cellphone usage on the road for all of these other fleets. And then hopefully beyond that, to all of the public is really my goal. And then we really are making a dent in this safety problem. Okay. Okay, let me know if this slide advanced to fleet collision tracking.
You're on training.
Okay, that went too far.
Now it is collision tracking.
Okay, great. So what we're looking at here is the costs that we're still working on this. This is in draft form, but the cost per year of collisions. As you can see, 2018, almost $750,000 to the city, almost $700,000 in 2019. Our 2020 numbers aren't complete yet. This is from various things. The repairs that we do are in orange. The blue is liability, insurance payouts for damage and injuries and that kind of thing. We've only started tracking workers' comp in the last two years, and that's in gray there. So this is taxpayer money. This costs all of us when we get into collisions. And we'd really like to track this better and eliminate as much of this as possible every year. Okay, one of the ways we can do that is training. Obviously, with COVID, we don't have as much in-person training as we used to for safety reasons. However, there's a number of trainings that are out there, online, in person, in vehicle, around defensive driving, around specific skills for specific types of vehicles that we have in our fleet. Various groups are doing training within the city right now, but I'd like to launch a citywide program that's very aggressive, that touches just about everyone who works for the city that will be driving city vehicles. And some of that can be done in the classroom as well, which is why I'm showing a classroom in our new building on Nacusa Trail that I mentioned. Okay, and then something else we're hoping to do, again, today's presentation is part of that, is outreach. We're doing a lot of this on sustainability already. Pictured here, we have all of the fleet managers from around Dane County have been getting together to talk about sustainability, to talk about EVs and biodiesel and anti-idling, the solar-powered charger we have here on North First Street. So we have a pretty active exchange with other fleet managers already. I'm really hoping to extend that into safety, starting with this year. All right, that's all I really had. I have my contact information here. Our website is cityofmadison.com/fleet-service. I would really like you all to visit. There's a lot of information on there, on many areas, not just safety, as we were talking about today. And the best way to reach me is to email me if you'd like. Unless you have any questions now, I'd be happy to answer.
All right, thank you, Mahant. Any questions? Chris, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks for the presentation and the work. I think the stuff on, you know, sort of curbing the culture of distracted driving is great. And you mentioned how hard it is to enforce that and sort of relying on culture. I wonder if you've explored any sort of options for using apps that can monitor when folks are using their phones when they're driving and even, I think, speeding or like rapid accelerating and braking and things like that. And I know you probably couldn't force something like that, but maybe you could create like an incentive program where people can get rewarded for being the safest drivers or something like that.
Oh, yes, Chris. Thanks for bringing that up. There's a lot of very cool apps out there around safe driving. There's a company called ZenDrive. There's another company called Cambridge Mobile Telematics, which is all through your cellphone. As a lot of you might know, your cellphone has a gyroscope and other components that will tell you. And your phone knows if you're walking, riding a bus, in a car, driving a car, or has a passenger sitting in the back. Your phone knows everything about you. And there are apps that take this information and use it for things like safe driving. The issue for us is, right now, for this to be effective in city government is the city does not give devices to all of our staff. Typically, it's only managers or some people in each division that have a cellphone. So we don't have a universal cellphone policy where everyone who works here gets one. If you go to a lot of companies, they do that. And that can give you the right to put an app on a phone that you're giving a person. So for them to do it, for a city driver to do it on their personal cellphone, they would have to opt in to that. And in my previous job, we tried very hard to do that and had very little success. So you actually nailed it when you said how it might be difficult to get folks to sign up. There's other kinds of things that lock phones and things like that. Again, we're in personal phone territory. It's very difficult to do things like that. But it's something we'll keep exploring. And, you know, one of the things I am advocating for is that the city does have a device strategy because we're in the 21st century now. I know so much work, not just around vehicle safety, but everything we do in city government can be done on cellphones to great effect, and I think the cost would be worth it.
Yeah, great, thanks. And not surprised you're thinking about it, but good to hear that.
Thank you.
All right, Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thank you, and thanks for the great presentation, Mahant, and all your work on this. Really appreciate it. It's good to be a leader in this field for Madison. Couple thoughts. One is vehicle miles traveled reduction has really surfaced for this board over the last few months, especially, as being an overarching policy goal that would really help us achieve a lot of our other goals. And Vision Zero and safety is also one of those. So just wanted to kind of get that on your radar if it's not already. And I'm sure it is because, you know, reducing vehicle miles traveled will also help on the sustainability front and on the cost side of it. But I think just having that, connecting the dots with that being also a safety measure would be good to highlight that if, you know, if trips aren't needed, don't take them at all. There's nothing safer than that. The other one was, I don't really want you to tell me what the speeding threshold is that's being monitored, but just want to advocate for keeping it quite low. And, you know, that is something that I think we could also have a really great impact if all of our city vehicles are really closely following the speed limit and not having too much of a cushion on that one. I had two questions for you. One is with the APM, is that a done deal? Is that in the works? Do you need any support on that? Or are you anticipating that that's something that will be either in place already or that we're moving towards?
Sure, some great comments. First of all, Alder Foster, thanks for inviting me to present today. This is something I haven't presented at before in a group that I thought might be interested in these topics. So thank you very much. I appreciate that. You mentioned vehicle miles traveled. One of the silver linings of COVID-19 is drastic VMT reduction on our private folks not driving their own car to get to work. That's a big one. And also, a lot of our cars are not being used in our city fleet right now because of it. So that's a bit of a blessing on VMT. You brought up some great points. We actually give free bus passes to every city employee, which is really an awesome deal that a lot of places don't do. It's something I've used heavily myself in the last three and a half years. And that is in the vehicle rules that we're talking about. It says, wherever possible for your city business or personal business, use your bus pass to get there. And we also say, use teleconference wherever possible. If you have seven people coming to a meeting, as you know, let's take this meeting. In the past, a lot of us would have traveled by car to get to this meeting. By doing it virtually, we're all saving gasoline right now and VMTs as we speak. So that is in our rules. Use a bus wherever you can. If you can't, do it by teleconference or Zoom where you really can. That's when you're supposed to use city vehicles. So I'm glad you brought that up. That is in our APM. As far as the state of the APM, we're in the very last few days before it, I think it gets finalized. We're just putting in some last-minute edits that folks are sending us. But the meat and bones of what I presented on today is all ready to be published soon and signed off on. And as you might know, APMs are internal memos for city employee conduct, and the mayor has to sign off on it, but she's indicated that she won't.
That's great to hear. And then my question was, I didn't see any mention of kind of the safety of the vehicles themselves, you know, both for the drivers, but also, you know, I think there's been a lot of, well, especially in other countries, I think more attention around kind of how drifter some certain vehicles are, especially to pedestrians, you know, large SUVs, for example. So is that something that you take into consideration with our fleet management? And if so, it might be good to highlight that going forward as well, that we're looking for vehicles that are safe, again, for the driver and occupants, but also for other folks out in the environment, I think should be a key point to highlight.
Sure. So I didn't get into this too much. It's a little technical, but high level, yes. We are really taking a hard look at various kinds of backup cameras and side-view cameras for the larger vehicles that have blind spots. So you might know that sedans since 2016 have backup cameras standard for light-duty kind of vehicles, but not as much on trucks, which actually I would say need it more, the things that back up at loading docks and the trucks that might need to back up in parking lots or wherever they are. So we're looking at different kinds of cameras, as I mentioned, and the technology is getting really better every year on that front. We're also looking at something called Advanced Driver Alert Systems. So some of you might be familiar with this. If you swerve out of your lane, it'll tell you there's another car in your blind spot. Be careful when you're trying to change lanes or merge or that kind of thing. You're also seeing something called automated emergency braking. So this is a function of automated driving where before you hit something, like, let's say I'm driving in the park and I'm a park worker. I'm about to hit a bench because I don't see it with my truck. This kind of thing happens all the time. The automated emergency braking will stop the truck for you before you hit it. And so I've tested this stuff out. It's very cool. So we're looking at the whole suite of vehicle safety items out there. Eventually, we're going to head towards automated functions, which will, I think, make us safer if the car's braking for us before we hit something, for example. So we're looking at the entire suite of technology. I mentioned GPS as a high-level one, but there's others, as I mentioned. I hope that answers a little bit.
Very much, and I sort of assumed that you were tracking on it, but just appreciate hearing the details on it. So thanks again for all your work.
Sure. And also, there's pedestrian warning systems as well. There's no perfect magic bullet right now, but we're trying to look at everything.
Are there additional questions? Are there additional questions? Right. If the board would like to do so, I would entertain a motion linked to the effect of approving and supporting the fleet Vision Zero efforts. Perhaps we could include something like continuing efforts to push the envelope on improving safety and decreasing VMT. If there's interest in that, I'll entertain a motion. If not, we'll move on to the next item. Alder Foster?
Well, I guess since you put it out there, I'll move it. I'm certainly very supportive. So if the rest of the board is as well, we might as well put it on the record.
Alder Campbell?
Second.
Like of Alder Campbell, any discussion? Alder Foster, see your hand. Did you want to speak to it? Okay. All right. All those in favor of approving and supporting the fleet Vision Zero efforts and continuing efforts to push the envelope on improving safety and reducing VMT, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
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 Close no. Sure, it's unanimous. If you'd like to register a no vote, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands raised, that is unanimous. Thank you. Next item, Legastar 63955, Bus Rapid Transit and Mineral Point Road, left turns.
Hi, Mike. As you, most of you know, I'm going to share a quick PowerPoint, but this is going to be a pretty quick discussion. At the, at the adoption of our locally preferred alternative for Bus Rapid Transit, one of the things that was kind of left out there was Mineral Point Road. Do we eliminate a left turn and at which intersections in order to provide a better BRT operating environment and wider station platform? And information back, and we're coming back with some more information about the left turns with hopefully a recommendation to move forward. So as, as kind of a review, this is sort of the default way to do BRT center running on a street like Mineral Point Road without removing left turns. So we'd have a center station in the existing median space that's available. And then in one direction, the bus would kind of go around the left turns. And then in other direction, the left turns would kind of filter through the bus lane. By removing a left turn, we are able to have the bus drive in a straight line and then have a wider station platform with a wider median for people to cross. So that's our review. At our, at the last time, we talked about this in early January, we, we were given instruction to not remove left turns at Island and Rose. And then there are a couple other stations along the line, High Point, and then Mineral Point and Whitney Way. And then also Whitney Way and Regent, where we really can't remove left turns because they're, they're sort of necessary for the street grid. So the, the two remaining possibilities were Westfield and Grand Canyon, which are shown here, which were, we said we'd get some more information about. So this complicated chart is the left turn volumes, which we got from our subscription to the Streetlight, which is essentially a service, a big data service that pulls travel speeds and volumes from capturing device locations. So the, the orange lines here are the volumes for the left turns at the stations, Westfield, Grand Canyon, Island, and Rose. These two on the top here, Westfield and Grand Canyon, were the ones that we're looking at for potential left turns. And they're actually significantly higher than the left turns at Rose and Island, which we're not removing left turns at. These are, these are daily left turn volume estimates and average throughout the year for weekdays. But anyway, so our recommendation is just to keep all the left turns because of the, the higher volumes at those two intersections and the marginal benefit associated with just doing that in two locations. Left turns at Westfield and Grand Canyon, yeah, like I said, have higher volumes. And then the other just complicating factor is that if we had a north-south street at some point at Westfield that went south of Mineral Point Road, eliminating the left turn there may make it also critical to the, the street grid. So that's another factor. So the outcomes, if we did this, stations will be about 12 feet wide. BRT buses will have to make a zigzag movement, which can be done. It's, you know, it's not, not ideal, but it can be done. And then most are, most are all left turns, probably all left turns along the corridor will be protected only. So it'll be a red, yellow, green left turn arrow as opposed to being able to make a left turn on a green ball or the flashing yellow arrow. So I just wanted to, wanted to share that with, with, with the board. We can have, we take questions, obviously. I don't think we need a resolution or I don't think we need, we need action. But perhaps, perhaps we do. I'm not sure.
I appreciate. I think we would like action so that we can move forward with the design of the stations on Mineral Point Road.
Okay. Thanks, Mike.
Requesting action.
Requesting action.
Okay. All right. Eric Sunquist, go ahead.
So I guess this is for staff, but also for Alder Furman. After seeing the, the turning volumes at Rose and Island seem pretty low, is it really worth preserving those left turns for 250 some cars a day? And, you know, versus the benefits of the faster, safer transit? So I don't know if that changed your mind, Alder Furman, or if staff wanted to make another pitch for thinking about, you know, more aggressively cutting out some of those left turns?
Sure. So I, it doesn't, so I believe Alder Martin is here. She can address Rose. I will say, when it comes to Island, the problem is there is no light into that development and there is no alternative way into that development, Oakwood Village. And so I know the volume isn't as high as some of the other places. But for, for what that facility is, which, and that, I know it's, you know, not, not a ton of traffic. I think it's important for there to be a light for, for residents to be able to turn in there easily. The other, and it's mentioned in the staff report, the other way you can get in there on that doesn't have a light is sort of an awkward way to get in there, to be honest. So I, I've already had, you know, I've had residents even before this was proposed asking for it to be, you know, to have a turn signal, because there isn't a turn signal there. But when you have people traveling in there as well as, you know, medical vehicles, et cetera, I do think it's incredibly important. I really wish there was more of a grid on the west side, because then this would be much less of an issue. But because of the lack of grid nature, I still feel strongly that there shouldn't be a left turn at Island.
Okay. And staff, there's no way to accommodate that relatively small number of cars with a U-turn or some other arrangement? I mean, are you guys willing to give up on the left turns? Given these concerns?
So Mike and I will have different opinions regarding this. We encourage a diversity of opinions in our department. There are ways that we address this, right? And U-turns or Michigan U would be an okay, an acceptable way. Alder Furman makes a point that maybe some of the drivers that are accessing, you know, Oakwood Village might prefer a protected turn or perhaps at least a refuge for when they're making the turn. And that's, that's, I can understand that reason. I think that this is not a hill that we will die on. There probably are hills that we'll die on, but as a group, we've decided that this is not a hill that we'll die on. Mike, if you want to do the counterpoint, you're welcome to.
I know, that's, that's accurate. I don't know that I, well, I don't know that I completely disagree with that. The way that left turns would be accomplished would be by making a left turn at that driveway ahead or to the west of the intersection or by making a U-turn at that driveway ahead of the, the intersection and then making a right, you know, so a combined U-turn and a right turn. I don't think it's, it's, it's my, my place to say if that's acceptable. I do think we ask people to, you know, make more complicated maneuvers with the, the, you know, the driver's license that they get that says that they can do all these things. You know, trucks that make U-turns and, you know, trucks are not always able to make U-turns. And, and, and I get that. And, you know, Alder Furman certainly makes, makes good and valid points. I don't, I'm not, I'm not arguing against any of those. I, I think, you know, we as staff serve the board. And I think it's, we brought this to you not with a specific recommendation because it is a trade-off. And so we're asking you to, you to just decide.
Okay, thanks. That's helpful. I mean, if it's not the hill to die on, then that's not the hill to die on. But it, it just does strike me that these little conflicts are going to occur throughout the system of BRT. And, you know, if 200 people get their left turn here and 300 get theirs, where their parking spaces there and, you know, whatever. Before long, we don't have a BRT. We have a BT. Back to regular, it's a bigger bus with fancy stations, but our part goes away. So I don't know. I hope that we can, if we make these compromises to slow the bus down here and to make the bus, you know, it's just, won't be as good. The system won't be as good to accommodate, you know, a couple hundred left turns that, you know, it's not a slippery slope to really not having a good BRT system.
Thank you, Eric. Alder Martin, go ahead.
Thank you. I want to say that, that I, I don't want to slow down BRT routes. I do want our, our system to be efficient and, and making sure that this is as, as, as efficient as we can make it. But I also have had conversations with constituents regarding the, the left turn westbound from Mineral Point to Rose. And, and, and that's been an issue the entire time I've been in office. So, you know, I, I've had lots of people requesting the, you know, the, the green left turn arrow there. And we haven't been able to make that happen up till now. But I know that, that neighbors that live over there in that kind of Hill Farms to Crestwood neighborhood areas, as well as Glenn Stevens School, which is, is, I don't think that its, its actual address is on, on Rose, but it has like the building facing that street too. It, it is difficult for people to make those left-hand turns during rush hours. And I, I am happy to see that maintained. And I would ask for it to be maintained, especially given the growth at Kuna, which is just, you know, just barely west of that intersection. The, as well as the developments and growth at Research Park, just that would be east and south of that intersection, as well as the fact that, that it's, it's very possible that, that people will park at Garner Park in order to access this and, and will have more traffic there. And so I, I do think in that particular situation that we do need to look at what, what these, these larger campuses of, of certain companies that, that we have in the area are going to do impact-wise in terms of people traveling that area and, and making it more, potentially more difficult for folks who live north of Mineral Point Road that need that access, making it more difficult for them. So that, that is my thought. And again, I very much want our BRT routes to be efficient and to be as fast as we can make them. But I, I do hope that there is some kind of compromise that we can make that, that includes the left-hand turns at certain, certain intersections or all, depending on what we have. So thank you. Thank you very much.
Looked the wrong one. Thank you, Alder Martin. Chris McHale, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. Kind of looking for maybe a bright side in those low turn volumes. Without going into the signal timing and configuration too much, does that at least mean that most of the time the buses will get a quick and easy route out of the, through the intersection?
All right. Yeah. So the, so what would, that would mean is that the, the bus would wait for the phase when both the east-west throes are going. So the, if you think about a westbound bus, that's in the pocket, they're waiting to keep going, for example. They couldn't go when the westbound left turns are going, because that's a conflict. And they can't go when the eastbound left turns are going. They can only go when, when neither of those left turns are going. And so that westbound left turn would only come up when, when there's a car there would almost certainly be actuated only. So, so yeah, that, that certainly helps. I mean, you're still doing this kind of zigzag, which, which isn't ideal. And the, the station's not as, as wide as it could be. So that, I would say that delay is a relatively minor part of it. It's mainly the zigzag and the, the narrower station. But again, that's, you know, none of these things can't be worked around.
Thanks. One more quick question, mainly for the sake of public information and just general knowledge, I guess. Maybe we've already seen this, but is there already like a diagram of what a 12-foot station sort of looks like, the layout? And what the, what that loss translates to?
Uh, yeah, we had a graphic in one of our documents. I, I could find it, but it would probably take too long immediately. But if you want to, I can, I can send it to you later. We did, we did a quick, like, sketchup or something from a photo.
Yeah. I mean, if it's not out there already, it would probably be good to put it out there, but it, it might have been in one of the presentations you already saw. Thanks.
I think it, I think it was a while. I think it's at one of our public meetings.
Alder Furman, go ahead.
I'm ready to make a motion if that's okay.
Um, real quick, are there any additional questions for staff? All right, seeing none. Go ahead, Alder Furman.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the transportation staff's recommendation of maintaining all left turns along Mineral Point and the Whitney Way corridor for Bus Rapid Transit. And then I'll speak to it if I can get a second.
Is there a second? Alder Foster? Looks like a second. All right, go ahead, Alder Furman.
Thank you. I was absolutely open to having left turns in some of the other spots besides Island and based on Alder Martin's feedback, Rose. I don't make the decision lightly not wanting left turns on Island Drive. I think, you know, based on the, the population, the age of the population that's in that building, even if it's not very high numbers and how hard it is to get into that building otherwise, it's incredibly important for that left turn to exist. I understand staff position that they'd rather, but, you know, so like take, take Grand Canyon that had fairly, fairly high volume. I, I think we probably could have worked out a way to get rid of that left turn and do a detour. I understand staff's recommendation to say, you know what, let's just not have the left turns. And that's fine. But I certainly didn't take lightly the idea that we should be eliminating all these left turns and making our Bus Rapid Transit a little less convenient. But I do think, you know, the Island situation and the Rose situation are certainly unique. And, and, you know, based on volume, staff thinks that we should extend that. And I'm okay with that. So, you know, again, I'm hoping the board supports this because I do think it's important based on the configuration and layout of that area. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Furman. Additional discussion? All right, seeing none. On the motion. All right. Seeing none. Um, on the motion, um, I didn't catch it, Alder Furman. But, uh, basically on the motion of maintaining all the left-hand turns, um, as shown, I think in the current staff recommendation, if that's correct, um, using the language that Alder Furman used, all those in, um, all those in favor, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
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 Oppose, no? Chair believes it's unanimous. If you'd like to register a notebook, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands raised, that is unanimous. All right. Next item, um, Legis 63913, RP3 Parking Ordinance Options.
Great. So I'll start the discussion. Uh, this is meant to be a discussion, where we get some of your input. Uh, I think if Sabrina could be, you could show your face and if she could be unmuted, so if I say something that's incorrect, she can rapidly jump in and correct me. And also give her opinion. So, um, what I've done, there, this is a big topic, huge topic, but we would like to, to land, you know, in the next month or two. And so this is almost supposed to be a way to, to whet our policymaking appetites. I'm going to share a screen. Um, this is, um, perhaps some, sorry. Perhaps summarizes some of the discussions that were, of the answers that we've gotten from the attorney's office as well as kind of provide some options on where do we go from here? So, um, really, why are we doing transportation demand programs? We're trying to reduce our vehicle miles traveled, which is kind of a surrogate for greenhouse gases as well as energy congestion. VMT is influenced by travel demand strategies. Many travel demand strategies use parking as a measure for how the TDM measures, that need to be incorporated. The idea behind this is that less parking equals less driving. An example would be Cambridge. Cambridge has had a successful TDM program for a long time. Recently, they did a revision that's really tied to parking. That if you're going to provide so many parking spaces, which really indirectly subsidize auto travel, you should be subsidizing other forms of travel as other work. More parking in a development requires more TDM measures. So, um, uh, we've been working with Bloomberg Harvard internship as well as SSTI, rarely over the last probably six months or so, or more, to develop a, uh, potential TDM program for Madison. And it really uses parking as a metric for how many points a development has to satisfy. This is an example for residential. And you can see that, um, the start, the parking stalls per dwelling unit, uh, which is on the vertical axis, um, kind of determines how many points, how many TDM points they have to satisfy through, you know, bus passes or, bike, bike stalls, all those types of things. Uh, so it's really, it's focused on parking as a way to reduce motor vehicle travel. Using parking as a metric for how many points a development has to satisfy, it provides an incentive for developers to not build excessive amounts of parking, which we view as a benefit, you know, because if parking, the true cost of parking is reflected either monetarily or in difficulty of obtaining, then people will evaluate the different options that they have to get to, you know, their work or a store. But there's kind of the, the flip side of it. It could cause residents and users of the development to use on-street parking, uh, which increases the competition for on-street parking. And it really increases the concern of adjacent residents. It may hinder good developments. I'm an East Sider, so I'll just use an example. There are good East Side developments that, redevelopments that provide a lot of density on transit quarters, which is exactly what we want, right? Is that, you know, those developments can have, typically they have lower trip generating volumes, uh, rates. There, they have many options available, but when you do a dense development adjacent to, I'm going to just say a traditional, uh, neighborhood development, the residents can often, express opposition to that development because they are afraid that they will have a, a difficulty parking or that the parking from the development will spill over, particularly if the park, the development does not provide, lots of parking spaces. So, we think, you know, implementing the TDM program really should be coupled with increasing the effectiveness of our on-street parking policy. So we, um, we had a discussion, I believe at our December meeting, regarding what the parking purpose of our RP3 or our on-street residential parking program was. There are lots of concerns about how effective it is and how it's targeted. One of the aspects was, is that, um, some people would like to extend the hours of the, of the parking, so that you can't really park there until after 6 o'clock rather than 4 o'clock, which is kind of currently the case. And so, um, previous opinions from the attorney's office said we could change the purpose for our residential parking permit, which would probably allow us the ability to change time limits. Um, but it would eliminate the ability to exclude new developments from a program because right now, our, um, the way we exclude new developments from the RP3 pro, parking permit is because it's our current parking ordinance is targeted towards commuter parking. And it has been for 50 years. In our December meeting, we also talked about supporting businesses and adjacent uses and, um, and supporting TDM measures. And it seemed like, um, the discussions with our attorney's office, it seems like that the non-residential parking purposes are best handled in a policy document rather than in MGO 12.138. The reason why is because MGO 12.138 really is kind of, um, parallels a state statute that is very specific to residential parking and doesn't really, um, address business parking and, and other types of parking. It seems like the clarifications from the attorney's office, and we literally just got the, the memo or memos of, you know, in the middle of last week. So, I reserve the right to offer corrections in a future meeting if we need to. But it seems like we can distribute permits based on the applicant's off-street availability. So that means that if, uh, you're in a home that was built in 1913, where motor vehicles weren't a thing and you need your on-street parking, that you might be able to get priority over someone that, um, was built in a house that was built in 1980 and has ample off-street parking. It seems like we cannot vary the price per RP3 district based on the permit to spaces ratio, uh, meaning market-based pricing. I think this was a thought that some of our, RP3 districts have like a two-to-one ratio on the number of permits sold to the parking spaces available. So we thought, well, why don't we raise the prices in those RP3 districts? And it seems like that's not something we can do. And, um, this last bullet, Sabrina and I, um, vary in our opinion on this and I'm going to say, we might have to go back to the attorney's office. We might, we probably, see, I wrote, uh, I developed the slideshow, so I get to write the words that I want, right? Sabrina would say might, can't. I would say probably, uh, can have the permit fees increased for each successive vehicles. Um, the, the two things that are necessary are that the, the fees collected in total must reasonably relate to the program cost, okay? And the increase in fees should be justified by additional work. So for instance, if a, if one household has two vehicles and we charge more money for the second vehicle versus the first vehicle, in theory, we should have a reason for why we're, uh, charging more for the second vehicle rather than a policy reason. We, you know, it requires us more work or it's more tracking or we have to do an inventory of, you know, available spaces, something to that effect. Sabrina, did I capture that correctly? Do you agree with my characterization?
I do, yes.
Okay. We can limit the number of permits issued to the number of spaces available. Uh, we'd have to develop a rational way to prioritize, you know? Some people have suggested first come, first served, but is that the, is that the fairest way? You know, someone who is able to get up at, you know, eight, you know, get to the office at eight, the first, first day that they're available, do they get to have the most permits? So we might have to work on that. Uh, we might have to, metering by sign, which is, um, TPO, might be allowed under a different ordinance. This would allow non-residents to purchase a permit that satisfies a meter by sign. So this is somewhat complicated. I could try and explain it to you, but Sabrina would do a better job. So Sabrina, would you mind a clear?
Yeah. So the idea behind this is, um, there are some locations where there is, uh, use of on-street parking or, or heavy use of on-street parking in residential areas, uh, by non-residents, but primarily that's either to, um, you know, avoid paying for parking at a nearby, uh, employer, uh, or to, to catch transit, for instance. Um, and in areas where there actually is not a need for on-street parking for, for the residents. However, there are those areas, um, we do have places where even though there is not a, a need for that on-street parking, uh, there are restrictions in place due to the impacts of, uh, folks, uh, driving and congestion, uh, or, you know, just, uh, the desire, uh, from neighborhoods not to have a high number of, of non-resident parking vehicles, uh, in front of their house. So there, there really isn't the need for residents there, but there would be a desire, uh, to manage demand there, um, and also not incentivize, uh, people to, to use free on-street parking as opposed to, um, either, you know, taking public transportation to their workplace or paying for the parking that's provided. Uh, so this would be a way to essentially create, uh, on-street meters without actually putting physical, uh, equipment, uh, in somebody's terrace in front of their house, which from a CEDS standpoint, obviously would not be desirable for most residents. And, and in general, we wouldn't be able to, uh, generate enough revenue from the usage, uh, to cover the cost of having that type of equipment. So this would be a potentially way that we could accommodate some, um, commuter parking, but manage the demand better by using signage and, and selling, um, permits or even having a, a pay-by-sell, uh, in addition to that. But, but again, it would be posted by signage, um, rather than any type of physical meter in place.
And then, um, we can require the cars re-registered to the address of the permit holder. This could have a large effect, let's say, in areas near UW Madison where many students bring their cars, when they probably really don't need to, you know, they could use public transit, but they, they bring their cars anyway. So, option one, okay, is to keep RP3 with add-on options. And I, I just want to put a caveat that, that we also have RPO, you know? We have a small amount of RPO, so this is more just kind of the focus of our program. Right now, our, our, our program is primarily focused on RP3, which uses these time limit signs, you know, two-hour parking signs. And basically residents who have a sticker, uh, can ignore those time limit signs because, um, they've purchased a permit and they're a resident. So that's kind of the focus of the majority of our program right now. We could do an add-on A, which, um, streets adjacent to a development are automatically enrolled in RP3. An example of that would be, um, I'll, I think I'll use Madison Yards as an example since that's kind of on people's minds. You know, the streets by Madison Yards would automatically be enrolled in RP3 when that development gets approved. You know, one complication with that is all of a sudden people that park on the street, you know, need to get a parking permit, you know, and they might not be aware of that. Add-on B, these are, we can do one or all of them or none of them, right? Uh, we could limit, uh, the numbers of the spaces available. If I remember correctly, we, um, I thought I had put a parking, a, a map showing the, the overages of, um, permits issued diverse, versus parking spaces available. And I thought I had this in this presentation, but it appears like it's not in this presentation, so I apologize. Must be in an earlier version. But many of our, our RP3 districts have, might have a two-to-one permit to space ratio. And so we could say, no, we're only going to sell them at a 1.2-to-1 ratio, subject to that effect. If you get a permit, you know, you, you get them, you know, you have a high likelihood of finding a spot. Add-on C, we could graduate the permit fee based on need or number of vehicles? Um, I'm gonna, do you mind if I stop right here? I think I, um, understand what's, what's happened is, um, our network, um, our network wasn't working on Friday, so I, I stored this presentation on my local drive. And so I was wondering why aren't the changes that we discussed on, on the slideshow? And this is the reason why. So this is actually the, um, the illustration of the parking ratios. And you can see how some, some areas have, um, .23 parking spaces per, um, parking permits sold per space available, while some have much larger. I'm going to go to this, okay? Apologize for the mix-up in, um, mix-up in, um, slideshows. Add-on C would be to, um, graduate the permit fee if it's allowed. And we'd have to show that it costs more for increasing vehicles. Or limit them, limit the permits to one per residence. And then add-on D would be, um, permitted vehicle must be registered at the residence. So that, again, would affect mostly college students. Real brief, uh, evaluation, um, this, if we kept our current RP3 purpose, which is focused on commuter parking, it does not address a time limit issue. Unpermitted cars can park on the street after 4:00 PM. Uh, it requires two passes from a PEO, which is a Parking Enforcement Officer vehicle to identify a citation, because most of our regulations have to do with two-hour parking. So you have to be able to prove that that car has been parked for longer than two hours. But it would maintain the current practice of making residents of new developments ineligible for parking. Option two is to move to resident parking only, RPO with add-on options. And just to note that we do have resident parking only in some areas of our city, but it's not the focus of our parking program. Is that fair characterization, Sabrina?
So right now, we've got an option where it's, the residents, when they petition, can choose which one they want, either the RP3 with time limit or RPO. But our existing ordinance, the RPO option, requires that 50% of that block remain unrestricted. So the intent really there was kind of as a, for folks who wanted to allow some commuter parking and not restrict the entire area, mostly around West High School was kind of the history of this. But because it really limits the amount of available parking to residents, they, you know, most have selected the time limit restriction, which is obviously more effective and provides more parking.
So add-ons A, B, C, D are really the same as option one. Add-on E would be just kind of repeating what Sabrina just said. Instead of the 50% that's currently in our ordinance that needs to be open, we could change it to 100% of the street parking. The option two, move to RPO with add-on options. It addresses the time limit issue, unpermitted cars cannot park on the street between 8:00 AM and 6:00 PM. And then the current RPO ordinance requires half the street to be unrestricted, and we could amend the ordinance to create a full block RPO option. It requires one pass from a PEO vehicle to identify a citation, so in some ways, you might say that the enforcement efforts with this program would be cut, you know, 40 or 50%, right? It would maintain the current practice of making residents of new developments ineligible for parking. Option three, revise the RP3 purpose with an add-on options. We have options A, B, C, and D, just as we've mentioned before. Some of the evaluation, it probably addresses the time limit issues. If we, if commuters, preventing commuter parking is not the focus of our ordinance, we don't necessarily have to sign our streets for two-hour parking between eight and six. It still will require two passes from a PEO vehicle to identify a citation. And because we eliminate the focus on preventing commuter parking, it probably would allow all residents, even in new developments, to have access to a parking pass. Now, which perhaps could be addressed with, you know, allocating parking passes according to need, but it's this would address the time limit issue, but might allow new developments to have access to a parking pass, which is either good or bad, depending on your view. Some other refinements that we might consider, and this would be totally up to the board. We could remove RP3 or RPO areas from the program if no or limited permits are purchased. And so we found recently that some residential neighborhoods will enroll themselves in the program because they do not want commuter parking in front of their homes, yet when we enroll them in the program, none of the neighborhood actually purchases a pass, so and this is kind of a there's pros and cons of both sides, right? If, if the fact that those streets are in the RP3 program means that commuters have to find a different way to park, either through purchasing parking or using mass transit. So there's an incentive for people that would normally park in front of those homes to choose a different mode. Conversely, though, you know, we kind of believe street parking is a city asset, and it's it's not necessarily owned by the person that owns that pavement, you know, in front of their house, and so do they really get to just say, I don't want anyone to park in front of my house? So it's, there's pros and cons of both sides. So we have some next steps, but I, we were hoping to open it up to discussion and see if there are things that the board likes and the board doesn't like and things that we should investigate some more.
Thanks, Tom. Why don't we just do questions? Well, we can only blend both, questions and/or comments, recommendations. Can all be kind of done at the same time here. Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thank you, and it looks like we don't have anybody from the attorney's office here, is that right?
That's correct, but we could bring someone from the attorney's office at a future meeting. Was actually kind of putting this on the agenda was just decided last week for discussion purposes.
Yeah, that sounds good.
If you'd like some more clarification, we could have an attorney's representative here on the 15th.
Yeah, I think it probably would be helpful, although I have enough detailed questions for them, it might be best if I just kind of connect between now and the next meeting as well, so I can just maybe check in with you and figure out who you're working with there, but you know, not having answered all those questions, I'm really interested in exploring the PPO more. I didn't see that, but that's sort of one of the kind of core options, but I mean, I read through the document that was shared and went back and read the state statutes, and it seems to me like we would probably have the most flexibility if we moved to such a thing, and it all, you know, again, my read of the statutes, I think would allow us to incorporate resident preference as we would like to within a PPO program, but that's one of the things I'd like to have confirmed. And I just got a lot of questions around what we can do with the cost. I saw some of the recommendations about what we couldn't do in terms of differentiating costs, but I think there probably are a number of other options, so I guess my overall thoughts right now is I'd like to look into the idea of a PPO with potentially some residential preferences inside of that program is something I'd be really interested in exploring more.
Good. Could I, if I, I think it's difficult to if we were to bring someone from the attorney's office, which would probably be Bijon, it's helpful to have give them a heads up on some of the concerns that we're having so that they can do some research in preparation beforehand. So actually, if there are specific or even non-specific questions that you could email, we could kind of provide that information to the attorney's office, and they can do a little bit of research prior to the next meeting so that they have answers for us.
Yeah, I've got enough questions that I think probably a phone call would be best between me and you know, we could.
Yeah, I think that, I think a phone call is fine, and we can arrange that, but then I think for the benefit of the body, if you understand what I'm saying.
Yep, that sounds great. Thank you. Yeah, it'd be nice if the answers to those questions could then come back to us so we can hear them. All right, Chris, go ahead.
Yeah, I might want to take a cue from Alder Foster and pounce on my questions, but I think I have a couple clarifying things that might be easy enough. On the I can't even read my writing. Oh, you mentioned that you can possibly remove RP3s if no permits are purchased. Does that mean that there's, we're pretty restricted in the rules for implementing an RP3? So that it, you know, residents could request one, but it would be hard to say like, oh, you can only request one if there's unapparent demand?
Well, currently, okay, RP3 is only implemented in commuter-impacted streets, and there's a very specific set of criteria. So the one slide that I showed is removing areas from RP3 is something that I added on, just because we've noticed that some neighborhoods that have requested it haven't really used it, right? They've just, they may have just used it because they did not want vehicles parking in front of their home that are not associated with the neighborhood. If you go to MGO 12.138, there's a list of criteria on how the street enters, and Sabrina, she's got this memorized, it's like the back of her hand. Do you want to add on?
Yeah, currently, we've got, you know, primarily it's through a petition process, so it's to get into a program, it's a petition process, we do a study, license plate study to determine whether or not a majority of that block is in fact being occupied by non-residents or commuters. And if it meets that criteria, along with some other zoning requirements, then it's eligible to have those restrictions posted. Likewise, if residents want to remove their area, it would be a petition process as well. That would just require a majority of the residents.
Okay, thanks. I think that's clear now. The PPO program, that's the metering by sign, can that be, I don't even know if this is useful, but can that be used in combination with other programs? So like you could have an RP3 with a PPO?
So I believe we could, so if we had a PPO restriction, right, that said, you know, payment required during these specified hours to park there. Basically, if we put in place an eight-hour, you know, meter time limit via signage, we can exempt residents from having to pay at meters. So if these would be considered meters, a resident who has a residential parking permit, you know, in that area where PPO exists, could park and not have to purchase an additional permit or pay a fee, but it would sort of be separate from the residential permit program?
Okay, thanks. I think just one more. So first of all, I mean, like, this is great information, so thanks. It feels like we're really moving on, making sense of this. And to that point, I noticed that this presentation, you changed the option of charging more per vehicle, I think, since since even this landed on Register, from a "cannot" to a "probably can." So is, I think, Tom, what you were saying is as long as we can demonstrate that the, it takes extra effort to keep track of second vehicles or something like that, that you think that the second vehicle could be priced more? Is that pretty much what you said?
Yeah, and so I'm gonna remember my caveat that I put at the very beginning of this, right? We reserve the right to revise our answers. I think that the attorney's office was probably emphasized that we need to demonstrate when we charge more that there's a work effort associated with the additional charge. And so, for instance, an additional vehicle, let's say if one car versus two cars, it might be difficult to charge more for the second vehicle, because it might be more difficult to show that it has more work, right? We could perhaps limit the number of permits to one per household, right? But charging more for the second might be more difficult. Conversely, let's say if we said we were going to charge based on need, right? Well, we might be able to argue that it's, we could argue perhaps that it costs more to give a permit to a house that has ample onsite storage, because that means that we have a program that kind of measures how much onsite storage areas for parking, and we have to inventory that, and we have to maintain a database, and so we might be able to make that argument, you know, that indeed there is more record keeping involved in providing permits based on need. That's just the thoughts on the top of my head.
Yeah, thanks. I think that's it for now. A lot of this, it's great. I'll just need to sit and digest a lot of it.
Thanks, Chris. Alder Foster, go ahead.
I was just gonna point out two kind of big picture thoughts that I'm having on this ahead of being able to talk with the attorney's office, but one is, I think it would be to our benefit to forget about our current ordinance and forget about the RP3 program. I think part of the challenge with this is we're like, working within that framework and trying to figure out how we can like move around within it. And I think, if I understand it largely, though, I mean, that's all stuff that we can recommend to just get rid of completely, and then we're really just left with what we're allowed to do or not allowed to do by the state, which, again, as I'm reading it, is probably not as restrictive as what we've kind of done to ourselves with our ordinance. So big picture, I think it might be helpful if we, again, just kind of ignore what we have today and have a better understanding of what we actually can and can't do. The other thing that I think is going to be really important with this is where I think it's going to be more difficult to sort of charge more for different things, I'd like to explore with the attorney's office the idea of charging less, or perhaps in other words, you know, having like grant programs, right? So this is how we do it for things like our sidewalk assessments, where our sidewalk assessment policy still says 100% of the cost of new sidewalks, it's assessed to the property owner. We didn't change the assessment policy, but we created a safe routes program that rebates or discounts half of the cost for people that are in established neighborhoods. So I'd like to explore that approach of maybe we can't charge more to certain people, but maybe we could give discounts. And I think there might be opportunities with there, but in order to really explore that, I think one other thing we're going to have to do is really understand the true maximums of what we're able to charge. If we can't, if we can't charge more for high-demand areas, it would be nice to know what our true actual ceiling is. And then, again, look at discounting things in other places, because as I read the state statute, our limitation really is against charging more than the cost to provide the service. It's kind of the biggest barrier, so just some kind of big picture thoughts I wanted to share out there with folks.
Yeah, so we can, I noted those. Sabrina, you actually know how much, if we were to charge, how much it costs us to administer the program, how much would it be per permit?
So I think we're at about 120 per permit that we could charge. Obviously, it would change based on the number of permits sold, and we could probably expect to see a significant decrease in permit sales if it were increased, which, you know, again, would allow the permit fee to be increased just based on volume. So it's really something that we, you know, could take a look at year to year based on actuals.
But Sabrina, correct me, but I don't, like, that doesn't include the cost of actually constructing, snow clearing, maintenance of the actual parking spaces themselves on the street, correct?
It does not.
Yeah, and so, I mean, again, my read of the statute does not state just the cost of administering, it's the cost that we're paying, that we're incurring to have that service available. And that's just for any kind of fees that we charge, and perhaps there's some exemption around parking meter fees that I'm not aware of, but you know, if we can charge $2 an hour for an on-street spot with a meter, you know, that's $1,400 a month. So, I mean, either that's illegal or there's a lot of room to work with in terms of what are allowable charges. So again, I think we just need to really push the envelope on that and really understand an actual limit. and really understand an actual limit, not how much we want to charge, or how much we think it's fair, but how much we actually legally can charge. Because that, I think, will open up a lot of options for us.
I think on, on note, we can meter anywhere, really. And that's, it's just that we, when it's, something's metered, then we, we open up that space to everyone rather than, you know, the resident.
Right. But a PPO program is essentially meters by permit, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And that's-
So if, if we can charge $2 an hour with a physical meter, then we should be able to charge up to $1,400 a month for a permit. And so then we can back all the way out of that to what we want to charge. And we can also, as I understand it, give free passes or subsidized passes to residents if we want to preferentially treat them. So I think it just completely opens up options of, in terms of how we want to price things.
Yeah. That, it seems like our discussions with the attorneys have kind of veered away from that, that we can't do that. But let's, let's explore that further. So I have a suggestion on maybe perhaps having a alternate meeting with the attorney's office. And I'll bring up when everyone's questions and comments are done.
All right, Eric Sunquist, you up next? Go ahead.
Well, just one other thing to put on the list for the attorney, and that's, Tom, you, you mentioned this, but there's, if, if there's, if the ratcheting up the fees through PPO or some other mechanism doesn't work because it's not legal or we don't have the, the political will to do it, there's still the oversubscription issue. And, you know, you, you mentioned maybe it should be first come, first served or something like that. And then we also have this issue of maybe second cars should be excluded. So that would be a good one to, to see what the options are with the attorney's office there. Because I'm guessing that we will end up, you know, without a full, full, without the pricing mechanism doing every, all of the limitation that we want. So if something along the lines of, you know, first, you know, everybody who wants one per household gets to go first. And then if there's any leftover, the second cars can do a lottery or something like that. I don't know how many second cars there are. And I guess, you know, when we're talking about student households, it could be four, if there's four roommates, there could be four in there. And I don't know how many, like, out-of-town license plates we've got that could be wrung out of it. And what, how easy it would be for them just to change the address on the license plate, if that's a problem, and register it in Madison, if they really wanted to. So, um, so I guess I'm, I think that seems like a likely fix to some of this is the, is the cutting off the number and then figuring out what, what is the fair way to do it? And to Alder Foster's comment about throwing out the purpose, I think, you know, that's where I started on this too. And if we can go to that metered arrangement, then maybe that's possible. If we're stuck with something like RP3 though, then this limiting the number is going to be super critical because all of a sudden, if we, we throw out the purpose and keep something like RP3, then all of these excluded buildings come onto the market for, for permits. And all of a sudden, the oversubscription problem is like way even, even worse than it is now. And it makes the whole program untenable. It's just like, you know, if there's one permit for every force, I mean, one, four cars for every available slot, then, you know, what good is the permit? None. Might as well not have it. And people will be even more nimbish about off-street parking than they are now and the developments that come along. So, um, anyway, that's a little rambling. But I, you know, for the point for this follow-up discussion, however it takes place is like, what's a, what are the fair options for limiting the number if we don't do it by pricing?
Thanks, Eric. Margaret Bergamini, go ahead.
Thanks. Um, just a couple of things I want to throw into the mix as we move forward thinking about changes we might make. That, because we started this process in a very different context. With the, you know, we started it pre-pandemic. We started it with a full-size bus system, which still wasn't full enough for many neighborhoods. But we're looking at potential for long-term and significant cuts to bus service. So when we talk about, you know, using this policy to leverage folks to not have cars or switch, switch to alternative means of transportation, you know, some of our parkers are, you know, are actually, they're, these are informal parking rides. Or they're formal parking rides. I mean, they're parking spots, you know, where we get complaints from those neighborhoods. That, as Tom points out, ask for the parking permit program and then nobody buys a permit. You know, my impression is that a lot of those folks are concerned about bike, bus commuters parking in their neighborhood. And that's, you know, as a policy matter, that's not an attitude that I want to encourage. That, as Tom points out, those are, that pavement is city-owned and everybody's paying for it. Public good. And just because you don't like a car parked in front of your house doesn't mean there's not going to be a car parked in front of your house. So I think that we need to, when we're assessing those kinds of situations, I appreciate the idea of potentially, you know, lifting those permits. But I hope that we are evaluating all of these issues in the context of the bus system we actually have right now and that we are likely to have for the next number of years moving forward. The other thing I just want to mention because I'm not sure that folks are aware, and, you know, I think obviously most of you know what my day job is. And I'm all in favor of encouraging stu-, you know, discouraging students to the extent possible from bringing cars to Madison. And all about encouraging them to use the bus system. But I think that many of us who are older have an outdated idea of what's necessary and not necessary for students. Many of our students, you know, well, who knows what's going on this year because this year is so strange. But last year, let's say, a lot of our students were carrying two and three jobs. And those jobs were not within the bus system or not within the bus system's time limits. So hard to work out at West Town, you know, if the last bus is running at 9:30 or something along those lines. A very significant problem for a lot of our students in, for example, in the School of Education, is limit, and in various volunteer programs, is limited service in the evenings to those neighborhoods where their services are required. So, and a third point I'd like to make, and, you know, it's sort of out of the purview of this committee, but living in a neighborhood where this is the, this is a problem, I just want to highlight it, which is if, if we take away RP3, say, on North Blair Street or North Hancock or East Mifflin, wherever, in some of our more, in some of our more densely populated downtown neighborhoods that also have older buildings and also have, um, codes that should prevent owners from turning their green spaces into parking lots. But we know for a fact that those greens, that those yards are being turned into parking lots as more students or whoever, more renters have cars or how more households have multiple cars because that's what's required. So I would hope that we would look at these policies not, also in the context of land use, also in the context of wastewater or surface runoff and flooding, and also in the context of our greatly attenuated mass transit system.
Thank you, Margaret. Additional questions, discussion, things we want to see next time? Obviously, if something comes up between now and the next meeting, make sure you get that to Tom. Any questions so that he can make sure the city attorney has a chance to review it before the next meeting? Tom, any further comments?
Uh, yeah, actually, I, I'd like to give a more descriptive, more description of what I, what I think our next steps are. I think that there's a variety of questions that many here would like. And so I'm gonna, I'm changing the slideshow as we speak. But I'm going to ask you to forward questions to Tom or Sabrina. So that we, we can present those questions to the attorney. I think what that would do is it would just provide, I want to say, it gives them, it's fair to them to give them a chance to review some of the statutes. And I know Bijan has been working with us on this. And sometimes she likes to consult with her colleagues on the way a certain statute's interpreted. And then next, I'm actually going to say that perhaps there could be a question and answer answer session with the people that are interested with, you know, with the attorney's office. If we get these questions, perhaps a week or two later, we could have actually a question and answer session with the attorney's office. Probably would be posted because I think there may be enough members of the board that are interested in this. And perhaps it'd be, you know, Thursdays often are a good day or have relatively few committee meetings. So perhaps we could have it for like four o'clock on a Thursday or something to that effect. Perhaps we, we could, you know, we've, I've laid out on options. I've laid out, or we've laid out three options, but it seems like there's others that perhaps we omitted components or something we'd like considered more deeply. I think particularly the, the PPO option, somehow that hasn't, wasn't included necessarily in the residential part. This has been focused on the residential part because that's what the state statute really focuses on. But I think there's an idea of how do we, how do we combine that with a PPO, which would not be affected by the RP3 ordinance, right? So, so how does the, the board feel about this? That we, if there are additional questions that you forward it to Tom or Sabrina, literally within the next week, and then we could forward those onto the attorney's office, set up a session with the attorney's office or the board. Those are who are interested on the board. We would probably post it just in case there is a quorum. And then after that, there may be value in having a session on options. And then we can go ahead and put it, put together a parking paper with a recommendation. I think there's a desire to keep, keep this moving, not to get stalled. And so I think if we could have questions from, from the board within a week, that would help us. And then we'll forward it, uh, those questions onto the attorney's office and see how quickly they could meet with us for a session. How, how does the board feel about that course of action?
Any feedback? I assume based on lack of hands raised, that's acceptable. So why don't we go forward with that, Tom, unless there's an objection from a member of the board? Seeing, not seeing anything, so. All right, thanks, Tom. Further comments, questions, or discussion on this item? I am seeing none. Our next, um, two items are related. 63910, 2021 Department of Transportation Work Plan and 63911, 2021 Transportation Policy and Planning Board Work Plan. Alder Foster, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just gonna suggest referring this to our next meeting. If, I don't think it's time-sensitive and I had it for about two and a half hours. That would be my motion.
Motion to refer, is that the next two items or just the next one?
Yeah, both the work plan ones, yeah.
Okay. Um, there's a motion. Is there a second? Eric Sunquist, looks like a second. Any discussion? Grant, you want to say anything further? Okay.
Well, I guess just Tom, is that okay? I'm assuming these aren't time-sensitive ones.
No, not time-sensitive. And much of the information you've already seen. You know, I, I keep you updated every three months or something.
All right, then. All those in favor of referring items seven and eight, that's Legistar 63910 and 63911, to our next meeting, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
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 Close no. Sure believes it's unanimous. If you'd like to register a no vote, please raise your hand. Seeing none, that is unanimous. That's all we have for the evening then. Our next meeting is in two weeks on February 15th. Entertained motions to adjourn. Chris, moving adjournment. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder, I'm sorry, Alder Foster, I heard. All those in favor of adjourning the meeting, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
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 Close no. It's unanimous. Have a good night, everyone. Thank you.
Bye.